Will we be done by then?
We should, yeah.
Someone's telling you.
People are trying to run my life. And I'm not doing a very good job of that.
What's his coffee?
Honey, doing down there?
Are you calling?
Yeah.
Oh, his, yeah, he gets those, um, creamers. No, his coffee always smells good and I don't really like it.
My coffee either, but that's... Somebody got it all mixed up?
Yeah.
That's great. That's a consent, right? Okay. Anything else? Is your own leave here?
Yes, both people are here.
Phil, how long are you gonna be?
Presentation?
I listened to you this morning.
Did ya?
They don't let you go, do they? With me, um, they usually, I'm pretty short. I'm not as much fun as you are.
Who was that singing?
Good morning. Uh, at least I hope it's a good morning. Okay, let's be positive, it will be a good morning. Welcome to the January 29th, 2008 meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. Please join the board and I as we salute the flag and then stay standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And I'm going to assume that all of you included me in your moment of silence, thank you very much. The first item on the board's agenda this morning is a presentation of proclamations to Pat Pinkham and Ron Neay for years of dedicated service as members of the Tulare County Employees Retirement Board. This was something that I asked to have on the agenda because I have the privilege of serving this board and the county on the retirement board and I really want to thank these gentlemen. Or maybe punch them out, I'm not sure. But actually, I would like both of them to join me in the well if they would.
Hi, Ron.
Oh, do I need this? I've been told I over-project. I don't know that I'll read this. I just want both of you to know that I am semi-mad at both of you for leaving. But I, as long as the rest of the county, it won't be the... The body of work between the two of you that you've had serving the county is tremendous. And the health of the plan and the program is unprecedented. I think because of leadership on both of your parts, we won that, the last award that we won. You served as chair during that time, Mr. Pinkham. But it's greatly appreciated and I think a lot of times, we have many people that serve this county in many ways, sometimes they go unnoticed. Hours and the time and the dedication on many of the committees that we have. But I certainly realize, because I sat there with you week after week and watched your work and want you so much, the county, and I'm gonna speak for all the constituents because they let me every once in a while, appreciates that dedication, that service, lots of you, lots of time, but quality of service, body of work. Right, Roland Hill? Current chairman of... But we would take him back, would we? Oh, absolutely, okay, all right, I'm getting an affirmative. Anyway, these proclamations are just a small token of our appreciation and it mentions all the time, all the plan associates, all the, actually, the percentages of increase in our investments. And so with that, I'm going to present these to both of you and thank you so much for all of your hard work and either one of you are available to speak if you'd like. I'm not getting any takers. Thank you very much.
Madam Chairman, I just want to also add my thanks to the two of you. I know you've given many years of service to this county and to the retirement board. Ron, as he was actively employed, but the county was served for many years as representative for the membership and of the active members. And Mr. Pinkham, all of your time that you've dedicated as a public person, not directly tied to the county, much appreciated and when we look at the success of the retirement program, how well it has performed and the awards that you have won, it's because of your leadership and because of your diligence and what you've done. And we just want to, I just want to add my thanks to what you have been able to do for Tulare County. We wish you well in your other future endeavors.
And I'm not bitter, really, I'm not.
Just real briefly, you know, seeing the condition of other counties in the state's retirement fund, I don't know if people really realize how much effort and work and studying goes into doing what you do and making the decisions that you do make. But I appreciate the health of our fund as do the thousands of employees that are currently employed and the thousands that are receiving retirement funds. So it's probably a thankless job for the most part, but there are several thousand people that are very thankful for what you do. So thank you for your many years of service.
I would also like to say thank you. It's quite a feat to keep us over ninety percent funded in the retirement program. And as mentioned before, there are a lot of counties that are really in deep trouble with their programs. And it's through your stewardship and your hard work, and I know looking at those numbers certainly aren't one of my favorite things in life, so I appreciate all the sacrifices you've made as you served Tulare County. Thank you.
I'd also like to thank you, you guys, for your hard work and the knowledge and the stability you've brought to this retirement program. I only wish that you'd had my IRA and you working on it. But no, thanks very much and good luck to you guys in the future. You've been much appreciated.
Thank you again. Okay, board, we'll move on to item number two. Supervisor Cox, would you like to head up this?
Yeah, I'll introduce Jed from our staff who will actually take the lead on this presentation today. He's lined up some folks that will come in and talk to us about the various aspects of what the task force has been involved in over the last, over a year. And so with that, I'll just kind of turn it over to Jed and let him take the lead.
Do we need his name and address for the record?
Jed Turbaya, 2800 West Borough Avenue, Visalia.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir, yes. He feels like he lives here.
Yes.
During the month of November, he did.
This morning, I'm here today as staff for the Tulare County Gang Prevention Task Force. Joining me are Adam Valencia from the Tulare County Office of Education and Tulare Police Department Captain Jerry Breckenridge. Both serve as co-chairs with the task force. The item that comes before the Board of Supervisors today comes upon a request that Supervisor Ashida made in December. During the presentation today on the update of the Tulare County Gang Prevention Task Force, highlights and efforts of 2007 will be brought forward. What is scheduled and being planned for the upcoming year will also be discussed. I'd first like to give a brief background on the Tulare County Gang Prevention Task Force. While officially created in the spring of 2007, the group's first meeting came in January 2007. At the meeting, representatives from the Board of Supervisors, Tulare County Sheriff's Office, Tulare County Office of Education, Tulare County Health and Human Services Agency, CSET, and other organizations and entities were in attendance. The mission was formed at the meeting. That mission is to discuss, create, and implement plans to combat gang activity. In spring 2007, a more comprehensive group of people and organizations started to meet regularly to form the Tulare County Gang Prevention Task Force. Items such as a website and other outreach tools such as gang summits were discussed. What is the task force? It's a countywide coalition comprised of members of the public, media, local businesses, school districts, faith-based organizations, community-based organizations, local government, and law enforcement agencies. Now, I brought a list of people who have attended in the task force meetings, but I was informed that I shouldn't bore everybody with a long, lengthy list at the meeting. But it truly is a countywide effort. We have organizations, law enforcement, and government from each district. There's been as many as one hundred and fifty people to two hundred people in attendance bi-monthly meetings. Highlights of 2007. With all the different entities in place, good things can, will, and have happened. Collaboration is necessary and key when bringing this many agencies, organizations, and people together. A few results of the task force's collaborative effort include: The Step Up Gang Summit, support from the Board of Supervisors and Visalia's application for CalGrip funds, the Step Up Job Training Program, which places at-risk youth between ages twelve and seventeen into part-time training jobs, and the Loop Bus and Route. Another highlight of 2007 came in the form of the formation of the Suppression and Prevention Intervention Subcommittee. The Tulare County Gang, the efforts of the two subcommittees will shortly be discussed along with the next two listed topics of identifying key resources and information gathering and sharing. I'll now turn the presentation over to Tulare Police Department Captain Jerry Breckenridge.
Good morning. My name is Jerry Breckenridge and I'm a captain with Tulare Police Department. I'm also the co-chair for the Suppression Subcommittee for the County Gang Prevention Task Force. And just some highlights for 2007. As Jed said, we formed in the spring of 2007 and we have been meeting regularly since then. This Gang Prevention Task Force was divided into two subcommittees. Suppression, consisting mainly of law enforcement agencies, and we've had an excellent turnout, a great representation of all the law enforcement agencies in the county. We have been meeting regularly. And just some things that we have identified, we identified three objectives that we wanted to address as a subcommittee. One of them was communication amongst law enforcement. As you know, gangs are, they're an organized group of people. They have their information, their protocols, and law enforcement needs to communicate with each other to make sure that we understand what's going on in each other's communities. Gangs don't stay in one community, they're not community-specific, they do wander from community to community. So we decided that communication amongst the law enforcement agencies is one of our objectives. Second objective we identified was sharing of resources. We all realize that within each one of our departments, we have a great deal of equipment, resources, talent, training. And we find that we don't need to purchase something new every time that we have a problem and we don't need to go out and send someone out to train. And we have the ability to call a neighboring community and tap on their shoulder and ask for assistance. So we have been sharing resources. The third objective is a two-pronged approach to gang suppression and it is sustained efforts in communities. We have brand numerous gang suppression operations in our communities. We go in, we do our business, and then when we leave, unfortunately, we sometimes leave a vacuum. And one of our objectives is to sustain our efforts in those areas where we have gone in and worked. And law enforcement can do some of that and we'd like to call this a two-pronged approach. We have this objective in that we want to partner up with the prevention side of this task force and hopefully work with them as far as the sustained efforts in the community. Some things that we have done, you know, law enforcement, we have the unique ability to work on our first two objectives on a daily basis. The communication, we have worked to improve those. When we have gang suppression operations, they typically involve a countywide gang task force, which means you can have anywhere from thirty to fifty officers in your community at any given time. And it's worked great for us in Tulare, I know it's worked in other communities. And when we do that, it allows us to communicate. Obviously, you have fifty officers from at least ten other agencies in your community. Everybody talks, we share that information. We also have an opportunity to share those resources. It's an excellent example of sharing resources. Along with the gang suppression operations in each committee, in each community, there's also been gang task force meetings. Just last week, there was a gang task force meeting in which there was over fifty officers in attendance, which is an excellent tribute to what we're trying to do, which is fight the gang problem in our communities. For 2008, we continue to work on these objectives. I don't think that we will ever reach our goal. I think that it's gonna be a constant endeavor to improve our communications, to continue to share resources. I don't think any of us want to put a wall up around our communities and hold everything in. Law enforcement's willing to share those resources. And then finally, the sustained efforts within the neighborhoods that we go into, the communities that we go into. We want to make sure that we stay close with this gang prevention task force and work with the prevention side so we can continue to work in these areas once suppression goes in and addresses the gangs in our communities. And at this time, I will answer any questions if there are any.
If I may, I know you had a couple occasions over the last few weeks to get together in these, I'll call them gang sweeps or probation sweeps. Can you give us some stats off the, I'm sure you know some of the stats, but I was impressed by the number of arrests, felony arrests, guns taken off the street, drugs confiscated, can you give us a little information about what happened?
Sure. And each community, and I could speak specifically to Tulare because obviously that's my community. On January 15th, we had a gang operation detail and we had nine felony arrests, several misdemeanor arrests, we stored several vehicles. But the main thing we got out of it was we took some serious players off the streets. We do have in custody a major player in our county. He's been identified as a major operator as far as the gang, as far as gang activity. And when I say that these gangs reach out to other communities, this person was connected to other agencies. We have local and state agencies calling us about this person. So it is effective, but we also realize that law enforcement isn't the only answer to the gang problem. We can go in and we can put people in jail, but it's not gonna solve the problem. We realize that it's gonna take some other efforts from other people, not just in the public sector, but in the private sector as well. But each time we do run these gang suppression operations, they are effective. I wish I would have brought some numbers from the previous ones we've had. We have them nearly on a monthly basis and each time they do net some quality apprehensions.
Thank you, Jerry, thank you very much.
Up next is Adam Valencia. He's the co-chair along with Vondor Enosov, HHISA, and Eldana Caudill. He's gonna be talking about prevention and intervention, the efforts that have been put forth.
Well, good morning. How's everybody doing? Good. I'm Adam Valencia with Tulare County Office of Education and I just wanted to take the time to thank you for allowing us to be here this morning to share of what we feel as a committee and as a true partnership, a true success, based on the work that we've been able to do. Like to click over to this next slide here and talk a little bit about this whole project and what it really means to coming together. The purpose of this whole summit was to take a look at, you know, on December 6th, we had a very, what I really believe it was a true success with our gang summit. We had over more than forty vendors there, we had a hundred volunteers from the different police departments throughout our whole county. You know, CSET was a big partner in that, Proteus, Tulare County Office of Ed, obviously, we were there, Tulare County Health and Human Services, what a great venue of support. The purpose of this summit was to really put together the meeting of the minds, being able to put us together as a group to discuss, to have workout, excuse me, breakout sessions, workshops that would cover information to assist our students, our parents, our adults within our county. The success of this endeavor was to really put together one of the largest that I ever participated in and I know that I got a lot of feedback from various groups of people that said this was a great summit simply because we had a chance to take a look at the forty vendors, for example, that all signed up to participate. They had a chance to share and there was a lot of people that said, "I didn't even know these vendors existed." And so we had a chance to really come together. But the focus of this whole summit was for us to take a look at the business leaders in our community, the faith-based, education, community-based organizations. These were the sectors that all came together. And, you know, we had talked about creating an opportunity for us to build on this momentum and I tell you, this momentum is continuing to grow with all of our partners and all the support. I really like to credit Jed Turbaya on the template. If you see in the back, you see teamwork because that's what it's gonna take. It's gonna take that ongoing teamwork. You know, looking at the whole piece, the majority of the attendees at the gang summit indicated that they would like to either mentor youth or volunteer. That's outstanding. I think a lot of what happens in our community throughout, and many of us know, is that we just don't know how. And so this gave us a venue to really begin to look at our partnerships, to begin to look at, the faith-based community stepped up and said, "Hey, we want to be a part of all of this." And it was just a true collaboration. When we look at, for us, I think the real special thing on what's next, the follow-through, it's critical for us. We just met yesterday as a task force, both the intervention, prevention, and the suppression groups. We had a chance to really talk about what worked for us, the successes, and of course, the things that we need to work on. And I think that's what's so unique about our group is that we're finally getting to a point where we can sit down together and communicate. And that communication is so grand, I think. Follow-through, and of course, Tulare County's unincorporated areas have summits geared for parents, Step Up Youth Gang Summit, and I'll be the first to announce that this youth summit is scheduled for September 24th. That's the tentative date that we're looking at. Our County Office of Ed, Mr. Jim Videk, will be taking care of the costs for the convention center and so we're ready. We're ready to move on this and this is a great effort and I commend our county superintendent for doing that. This Step Up Youth Gang Summit is gonna focus on leadership, it's gonna focus on all of our students because we truly believe that all of our children here in our county are at risk. We believe that. And I know that there's gonna be a lot of different venues there, there's gonna be employment opportunities, it's gonna be the same sectors that stepped up for the gang summit. We're gonna focus on the youth now and we're gonna use those same sectors to build on that. But taking a look at a lot of different things, I mean, this youth summit is something that's really gonna help us tremendously with our young people because we always gotta take a look at how can we meet our young people and what can we do to support them and build that infrastructure. What I like to say with Step Up is that it's given us an opportunity. This is not just a slogan, you see, this is for the duration. This is for an opportunity for us to continue to build a strong infrastructure for our students and for our families throughout Tulare County. These are some areas that we're thinking about. These are the things that we wanted to take a look with, the purpose, locations. And Tulare County Gang Prevention Task Force has agreed to facilitate the gang summits. That's the role that we serve as a prevention task force. Our job is to support and to build those infrastructures within our communities that we're gonna serve. And I think that what's real special about that is that every community's at a different place. And what we have found in our group is that we talked to all these different, I mean, we have representation throughout our whole county. And every group, every community's at a different spot and we want to be able to provide that support in many areas. And I think that that's the real unique thing about all the partners coming together. When it comes to the funding opportunities, the funding will come. It's the partnerships that really, really will set that apart and also the relationships. When we look at the relationships that we're able to develop here, not just in education, but our community-based organizations, our faith-based, our business leaders have stepped up. Everybody's coming together and I really believe it's really making a difference. Again, targeting the youth summit, I kind of spoke a little bit out before that, but I'll tell you a little bit, the tentative date is in September and Tulare County Office of Ed will take the lead on that and we'll work with everybody. We'll work with the Workforce Investment Board, we'll work with all the districts faith-based. And like I said, yesterday, we had a great meeting. We probably could have stayed in our meeting yesterday for about two hours just talking about all the different things. But the key thing for us is to get our young people involved because our youth gotta have the voice. They're gonna tell us where we need to go as adults and what we can provide. This is gonna be a full event where we would have lunch and we would have an opportunity for students. Kind of what came out of the meeting yesterday and what I've committed to do and the support from our county superintendent is that I'll have the opportunity to go out to different school sites. When we invite the students and we invite the schools, I'll have an opportunity. I'm gonna get a group of us from our particular subcommittee and go out and work with the students prior to the summit. So we're not making this just a one-day event. We're gonna have a chance to work with these students and build a relationship, the relationship that's needed because many of our students today are dealing with what we refer to as relational poverty. And so the more that we can build that support early, we will have a great success. And I'm telling you, there's many students, the number one thing they ask for is employment opportunities. "I'd like, I need a job, I wanna go to college." So we want to be able to provide this day where it's a working day. Of course, they don't know that yet, but they'll be a part of that. They'll be a part of that and a working day, meaning that our districts throughout our county will be there to support that because they know that their students are gonna come and they're gonna be a part of something that's gonna give them the tools if necessary to be successful in our community. And so we're gonna build on that and I'm excited about that because that's the work that I do in our county right now as I work with young people every day and this is gonna give them a chance to provide and show their leadership. When we're looking at going out to the school sites, I'd like to set up an opportunity for these students to work on a project prior to the event. And not necessarily just, it could be anything. It could be going and reading to the after-school programs there within their community. But we're also gonna identify adult in those areas, but we're also gonna make it a working plan. And so there's gonna be a lot of work that's gonna go into this because we want this to be a success. As far as the numbers go, we're not sure how many students will participate. We haven't determined that yet, but we're doing some really, we're gonna build something that's gonna be very special for our young people. Any questions or suggestions to all this work that we've done?
If I can, Adam, also we talked about possibly doing contests to get students out in the schools involved well beforehand, you wanna touch on that? And we talked about mentoring opportunities for the committee members as well.
Yeah, one of the things that we talked about a little bit yesterday was we wanted to get, to have some of the adults, the adults that are in this room, the adults that are up here, to have an opportunity to sit at the tables and begin to mentor, begin to, you know, we're not out of it yet. And I think the one special thing that we were able to identify early with our big gang summit is that there was not a lot of communication going on with our young people. And I think, you know, when I was visiting Supervisor Cox yesterday, we said, "How do we set this up to where we could have our adults participate, actively participate?" And so setting up some mentoring opportunities, there's many agencies that have adult mentors that are out there, there are many from the faith-based community that will be available for us on that. And I think the overall piece for that is to really get us involved and get us involved early because many of us here, we always ask the question, "How do we get involved?" And so we were hoping that through this process that we would give a chance for these students to do that. And as far as different... And as far as different contests in, in various areas, there's a lot of work to be done with that. I think this whole Step Up Summit for our young people is actually going to give us a chance to create some scholarship opportunities for our students. Part of what my role is with the County Office of Ed is to get out and work with our communities a little closer, work with our students, and, and begin to set up that plan. I'll continue to work with Supervisor Cox in, in building that infrastructure, so when we get out there, we'll be able to really set something up for us, for our young people.
And the Cutler Rosi announcement?
I'm going to make that announcement.
You're supposed to make that, yeah.
Oh, I'm supposed to make that. All right.
You ripped right past the slide.
Okay, great. All right. The Cutler Rosi Step Up, actually, I was part of the meeting, the very first meeting that came, came together, and I want to thank Supervisor Wordley for, for putting this together with us and also giving us an opportunity to have the community of Rosi, Cutler Rosi Step Up, and I mean, they had representation from all areas, from after-school to our, their, their superintendent, and they had the faith base there. It's exactly the model that we have put together as a prevention task force. And I know that that is going to be an opportunity for the Cutler Rosi area to really step up, but you know what? They've already stepped up. They've received the Weed and Seed funding. They have the infrastructure already in place. And our job as the prevention task force is to get out there and to support them and to build, build on what they've already created there in their own community. And I think the, the real special thing about that opportunity is that it's going to give us a chance as a prevention task force is just to kind of be the facilitators, maybe to help out. If they, they need some presenters to come in and, and work with our Latino population, we can do that. If we need somebody to come in and work with the faith-based community, we can do that. We have different partners within the, the task force that can help make that happen.
Okay. Any other questions?
Not, not a question. I had one, something that was, came out of our wrap-up yesterday. We did the wrap-up on the December summit. We had a, two representatives from the Farmersville High School District there, and they, they told us about something that had happened during that summit in December. They brought ten students from Farmersville High School there, and one of the students, who was a, a gang member, turned his life around and has already started the tattoo removal process. And so we, all through this planning, we always said, "If we could just affect the life of one, it would be a success." And we heard about that one yesterday. Now, I know there's many more that, that it did affect, because I had several people come up to me during the conference and, and saying how it had changed their lives. But for that young person to follow through, to step out of the gang, to start the process of removing the tattoos, I think was a wonderful news. So this is something I can see, you know, growing throughout our county and, and having a, a large positive effect on the, on the entire population, just not the youth, but the entire population.
Great. I just, one last thought. I, I wanted to make sure that, that for, for the good of the group here, that everybody would know our, our plan as far as the prevention intervention group. I, I wrote down a couple of notes here in looking at some of the areas that we really wanted to focus on, which, number one, being best practices. Having a chance as a subcommittee, being able to mobilize, being able to mobilize to various communities. And, and one of the, the first efforts that we were able to attend was at the Whitman Center on the north side of Visalia, and we had a chance to hear Joshua Huerta and, and the staff of Juan Guerrero there to give us an opportunity to, to focus on their best practices. And one of the things that we looked at as a group and as a subcommittee was to mobilize. Not just stay in one place, not just meet here in Visalia and say, "Yeah, this is what's working in our..." We wanted to be able to meet our, our participants. We wanted to be able to meet the individuals who are participating, where they're at in their own communities. Taking a look at training, meaning that us as adults, we, the trends are always changing with the gang subculture, and the more training that we can provide for individuals that are working with young people, that are working with families, that are working with school districts, would have a chance to receive some training. And then also looking at employment opportunities for our young people. One of the things that we looked at was, "How do we provide that? How can we get out there and step up to help our young people when it comes to employment?" But it's, it's more than just providing jobs. It's job readiness. It's getting them ready for the job, preparing them. We just assume that all of our young people know how to do a resume. So part of our plan was to begin working directly with Aldana and the Workforce Investment Board, being able to provide that support and building that infrastructure and, and looking at that. But I think, you know, overall, what we have found with this effort is it's gone beyond an effort now. It's, this is it. This is what we're going to be doing for, for the duration. And I mean that, because I'm part of this county and I'm part of this community, and I think it's really important that we continue to build on that. But I want to thank you. I want to thank you personally for your efforts and for your support in this overall endeavor, because it was a true success, and we're going to continue to build on this success. So thank you for your time.
One last thing, Madam Chair. We do have, I, I can't recognize everyone, but we do have some representatives here. Stan Bennett was here representing the business community, who is a large financial piece of this. Not only do they help financially, but they also put on breakout sessions and brought speakers in to, to do the main session as well. So the business community was a very important partner. I see Nancy LaLeva there, and I saw a captain with a P D. I don't see him now, but I, I... Okay, there they are. We have two, are both of our captains from Visalia Police Department here. Visalia was a very big partner in this as well, helping out financially, putting this thing together. So our, our financial partners are here today supporting the, the report to the board, and we want to thank them for their efforts and their support in helping to put this December summit on.
Well, thank you, Phil. I appreciate all the work that you've, you've put into this and making it happen, and to Adam and Vaughn, Aldana, Lieutenant Breckenridge, Stan, and, and all of you from the, the committee and that have been working so hard on this. I, I have to tell you that this is on the mind of this community, because whether I'm having lunch or, you know, shop, whatever, people mention it to me, it's important to us, and I, I believe that we are serious about taking back our community in two ways. If that involves law enforcement and, and we need that end of it, then that's going to happen. But it's the other community effort, where it's, whether it's working with parents and having them take back their family, or, you know, in the schools and how, how we work this and how we do this, the community, the business community stepping up and offering jobs and offering opportunity. It's, it seems to be such a holistic, if you will, for lack of a better word, approach, and certainly community-wide, that I believe that's where the success will lie. And I know that those of you that have been serving on the task force and the committee are relentless, and you're not going to give up. And so it's up to the rest of us to match that energy and that effort and to say, "We're not backing down, and we're not giving up, and we will do everything we can." I know, as you know, in the state of the county, working with the sheriff, we wanted to focus an effort in South County. This is the announcement today of the Cutler Rosi area effort. Community by community, block by block, whatever it takes. This is our county. This is our community, and we're devoted to it and dedicated to it. And these are our youth, and we cannot turn our back on them in any way. So I am so appreciative of this effort, and I'm here to help in any way that I can, but thank you all for being here this morning and for everything you do. I'm not done, but yes.
Just wanted to...
I was going to let you talk.
Well, I wanted, I wanted to follow up on what Adam's talked about, and that is that we do have a date set for the summit in Cutler Rosi, which will be March 12th. I, I'm very excited about this. I think when we look back, I think we will see the initial summit as being sort of a watershed event in Tulare County. But it's, it is only the beginning. And now, as we begin to move into these other communities, we're talking about the retail side, the actual implementation of, of best practices and good ideas. And so I'm very excited, and as Adam pointed out, we've had, we've had some planning sessions, we've had great participation from the school district, communities of, of, local community, organizations, faith-based organizations, our own staff from the sheriff's office, the fire department, probation, and, and from the gang summit leadership. And so I'm very excited about this prospect in, in that community. It has, it has a tremendous gang problem, but as you pointed out, has been the recipient of a major grant, Weed and Seed Grant, which is a five-year grant, providing funding for additional resources in that community. Phil and I took a, a tour of the Weed and Seed projects that are ongoing right now, after-school programs, safe havens for people. And it's all really looking, I think, very favorable, and I think the community is, is, is ready to get on board. I believe a key to this is going to be not only leadership from our organizations and from government and from involving our students, but it's going to be, I think, really important to have parents involved. And that's one of the things we want to really focus on in this particular outreach effort, is to make sure that we have parents who are in attendance. We will be covering, you know, it's mostly Latino population in Cutler Rosi. We'll have, we, we want to focus then on speakers and language that will be communicated to folks that are there, and really encourage them to step up and be the parents they need to be. They just have to, because I don't think the best programs in the world are going to be successful without family units being, operating the way they need to operate. So again, I want to thank Phil for his leadership in this area, and, and this is going to be a truly a great event. We have, we have a matter coming up later on, which we'll be talking about, which is a purchase of, of a portable building at our, where our substation is now. And that's really what we're looking at, is, is another piece in this puzzle of how we deal with gang problems in that community. So thank you very much, Adam, for your participation and for all those who are working so diligently. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure...
Madam Chair?
Certainly.
I, I think one of the most important things to this whole effort is the fact that you have to give our youth hope. And you have to give their parents hope. We have so many jobs that are, will be available by the time they get in the job market that they do have a future in Tulare County. And I think that's what a, a lot of the, the parents, a lot of them work in the fields, like most of our parents worked in the fields or our grandparents. And maybe the parents don't see that there's a very bright future for their kids. And if, if they can see that future, I think you're going to see more direction by the parents, saying, "Hey, you've got a whole future out there, either in government or in private sector. We are facing a very major labor shortage, and these are the people, the youth are the people who are going to fill these jobs." So if we give them hope, and they know what they're working for, I think we'll be successful. But we have to give them hope. Thanks.
Yeah, Adam, I'd also like to thank you, but I think one of the things that the Department of Education has is that little booklet that you put out on gangs. And through that, we can educate people. We can educate the parents and show them what gangs are, the colors, what the graffiti means. We just need to educate our, our whole population of what's going on around them. So many of them don't even understand that they have a gang problem in their community. But that little booklet is a very, very good tool, I feel. And I've given a lot of them out to people that I know, and they really appreciate it. So keep up the good work.
Yeah, thank you. And I just, real quick, I got to give credit where credit is due. Mr. Mel Barbola was the developer of that book there, and Mel served our county for a number of years and continues to do that great work. And fortunately, working directly with Mr. Videk on this effort, they put together a nice manual that, it, it's an ongoing piece. It's something that we can continue to add to, but clearly, Mel Barbola was the, the founder and the creator of that little booklet there. And the first edition came out, the second edition's out, and I believe it's, it's really something that we need to look at. And if anybody within this group here would love to receive a copy of that, just get ahold of Tulare County Office of Education. So thank you, Supervisor Ennis, for recognizing that.
Thank you again.
I want to point out that Mel Barbola is a former Employee of the Year of Tulare County. And that there is life after retirement, because he would have worked for the Department of Ed after this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Adam.
Hopefully understands, the, the whole community understands the support of this board and those of you that are involved, and the more people we bring on board to stay involved in this, obviously, the better we'll be suited. So thank you again, all of you. And to you, Supervisor Cox, you've put a lot of work and effort into this, and I appreciate that. We're going to keep you working every day. Before we move to our timed items, I, I would like to go to the consent calendar. I think we have some folks that are waiting for some items there. We are going to take off calendar item eight and item 24. So after that, if there's any other items for board members, if not...
Motion to approve consent calendar, less items, items eight and 24.
Second.
Okay. Motion is second. Cast your votes, please. Okay. All right, then we will move to our timed items. Let folks reshuffle. Item number three, public hearing, request from RMA. Morning.
My name is April Hill. I work at Resource Management Agency Planning Branch, Project Review. This is a public hearing for your board to consider a change of zone, PC 07010, and amendment to the county's zoning ordinance. Site includes, let's see here, sorry. The site includes about 150 acres. R Y Timber is the applicant and owner of about 110 of those acres. The site is located northwest of Dinuba, around Avenue 430, between Road 68 and Road 72. It's outside any urban development boundary, but close to the Dinuba city limits. It's subject to the Rural Valley Lands Plan and scored about 11 points, which is okay for non-AG zoning. R Y Timber proposes a zone change from AE 20, the exclusive AG with 20 acre minimum zone, to the M 2 SR, heavy manufacturing with site review combining zone. It's surrounded by AE 20 agricultural uses with the Fresno County Limits on the north, California Vineyard Ditch on the east, and Traver Ditch and the railroad on the south and the west. Surroundings include rural residences and agriculture. The site itself is mostly developed with existing uses, including Kochan Plant, structures for storage, and products that will be shipped by rail. It's a former location of Dinuba Lumber Sawmill. Here are some photos of the site. There's typical pole barns, storage for shipment, wood waste. There are two rail spurs on the site. There's one house that's occupied by an employee. This is Traver Ditch, otherwise known as Traver Creek, and this is the Kochan Plant. The applicant requests rezoning to continue existing uses without the need for a special use permit in order to resolve some existing violations and some parcels and to accommodate long-range growth goals. The Planning Commission heard, heard no opposition. The commission did recommend that your board require a cultural resources survey of the site as suggested by the South San Joaquin Valley Archaeological Information Center. That site study is near completion. Planning Commission discussed the merits of planned development and/or versus site review overlay and recommended approval to the M 2 SR since the site is already substantially developed. A public hearing to receive public comments regarding the change of zone to M 2 SR for R Y Timber. The applicants and the agent are here today if you have any questions.
Okay, questions from board members? No? Okay, thank you, April. At this time, then, it is a public hearing, so we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to address the board on this? Please come forward and identify yourself.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members, members of the board, my name is Randy Ruda, representing R Y Timber in this matter. Address is 11750 West Rutsel, Boise, Idaho. With us in the audience as well is Richard Heaton, the Vice President of R Y Timber, and Ed Todd, the City Manager for the City of Dinuba, is also present, if you have any questions for any of them. We've read and reviewed the, the reports. We concur with the findings and staff recommendations, as well as those of the Planning Commission. We appreciate their hard work. I'd like to take just a brief moment and thank April particularly. We went through this as a fast-track processing. We asked them to provide for us a, a minimum time, time process from application to now. And April, and the rest of staff, but particularly April, have worked really hard to, to keep us to that minimum time standard. We certainly appreciate it. As, as Ms. Hill mentioned, the Planning Commission recommended that your board require a, an historical resources study of the, the site. Rather than waiting, we thought that sounded like a reasonable idea, so we've commissioned that study. It's just now finished as of yesterday. So the purpose of that was to have something on, in staff's files for future development. That's prepared. We'll submit it to staff following the meeting. Unless there are any questions, that's, that's all we have. We certainly... We certainly appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Ruda? Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else wishing to testify? All right, if not, then we will close the public hearing, and bring it back to the board for discussion and action.
Madam Chair, just by way of disclosure, just want to point out that I was formerly employed by Dinuba Timber Industries, which is a sister company of RY Timber. That employment ended in 1995, hard as it is for me to believe. It's been that long.
So I think you've passed the statute of limitations.
I think I've passed the statute. Just want to say that this is a great opportunity, I think, for Tulare County, and I think a great land use issue before us, because we were talking about how to maintain our rail service in our county. And without utilization of rail, you're not going to have rail service. So one of the benefits of this particular project is it has access to rail, and we used to use that in the timber industry for bringing in, when I was much younger, bringing in material that we would process there to make bark products, and then often was used as a way of exporting our lumber. So it's, we used to use it that way, and now it's being utilized for other purposes. But the opportunity to make a much higher and better use of the rail is there because of the size of this parcel. And the City of Dinuba supports this, because they don't have really rail access in their industrial park that's available to them. So, this has the opportunity of providing jobs. This was a sawmill site since 1949, up until closed with the creation of the National Monument, and at one time was the largest single employer, full-time employer, in Tulare County. Not as well-known because of its location close to Fresno County, so many of our employees lived in Fresno County as well as Tulare County. But this has been the site of many employ, much employment in the past, and I think this action that we're about to take today will be a step in returning that site to a place of employment and opportunity for Tulare County.
Appreciate that very much.
A history lesson, I would gladly move approval to sign it.
Second.
Okay. Motion is second. Cast your votes, please. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. I actually wish that rail line extended to my front yard. You may, you may or may not know that I lost in the storm a 100-foot redwood tree. My front yard now looks like a sawmill. It took out three smaller trees, blocked the street, went into the neighbor's yard. Thank God, did not hit cars, homes, or children who were in the area, so perhaps I need to talk to these folks afterwards about milling my lumber. Thank you all very much. Okay. We have another public hearing. We'll move to item number four. Once again, this is Resource Management Agency with some demolition of substandard buildings. Is that you, Mr. Hader?
[laughing]
Good morning.
Good morning, members of the board. Staff is before you this morning to request that the board of supervisors hold a public hearing, authorize and direct the Resource Management Agency to put out to bid and supervise the demolition of 10 dangerous and substandard buildings in Tulare County. Structures are located at 17885, Road 232, Porterville, identified in our presentation as Structures 1 and 2. 33059, Road 159 in Ivanhoe, identified as Structure Number 3. 13342, Avenue 72 in Pixley, identified as Structures 4 through 8. Little housekeeping here. 38334, Road 156 in Seville, although the agenda item does say Sultana, identified as Structure 9. And 9540, Road 236, Terabella, which is identified as Structure Number 10. We're also requesting ratification of an abatement of the property located at 1701 East Olive in Porterville, which was removed last fiscal year before the end of June 30th. And authorize a deferment of the cost of solid waste disposal fees at the county facilities, and the placement of liens against the property for the total cost of the abatement, including disposal fees. The estimated cost is $120,000 for the complete removal. And for Supervisor Cox, it's about $20,000 in disposal fees that we're going to request the waiver on. Authorize the abatement in the amount of $17,996 on the property located at 1701 East Olive in Porterville. Structures 1 and 2, location, in Porterville. Site contains two substandard houses. Case was first confirmed in March 27, too. Picture of the Structure 1, front and rear. Frash within and around the structure. Structure Number 2, front and rear. Structure Number 3 in Ivanhoe, unburned, substandard house. Approximately 50% of the structure was consumed in the fire. Case first confirmed July 11, 2006. Front, rear of the property. There's also an auxiliary structure here, a garage, which was also consumed in the Structures 4 through 8 at 13342 Avenue 72 in Pixley, bannered homes and accumulation of solid waste. Case first confirmed October 14, 1997. This is a rather creative reuse of railroad boxcars. Also an accumulation of solid waste on the property, which also must be cleaned up. Structure 9, 4, Road 156 in Seville, another one of these houses that was consumed in a fire. Base structure is all that remains. Front and the side view. Structure 10, 9540, Road 236, Terabella, contains one substandard commercial structure. Case was first confirmed in February 15, 2000. We're requesting that this particular structure be suspended from the abatement at this time. The owner has come forward with a reuse plan for the building. We would like to give him six months in which to firm up his plans. Potential reuse is for senior citizen housing, approximately 48 units within the structure that would use this, along with additional work that would be created to make a second story on it. We're requiring that the property owner come forward with a structural engineer certification that the structure itself is sound, and that the cornice work and plaster add-ons on the exterior of the building are also sound, and not in danger of falling on anybody. Porterville. So our request is for the demolition, the cleanup, and direction to place the costs in county tax rules. Any questions?
Questions?
Did you indicate, I'm sorry, that they, it was improperly stated in the agenda item as being Sultana property, the...
Actually, Seville.
Yes.
Yes, all the notices to the property owner rescinded.
Oh, okay. Just wanted to make sure we didn't have it here. Okay, thanks.
By me.
Supervisor.
The waiver, the disposal fees, those are not going to be placed as part of the liens on the property.
They will be placed on the...
So we're just going to waive the fee to the demolition contractor, who would pay us for the dump fee, and then that dump fee will in turn be placed on the property owner lien.
That is correct.
And I see some of these things are 10, 11 years old. Have people been living in them for the last 10 years? Typically take us 10 years to knock down a substandard building?
Unfortunately, yes.
People have been living in them?
People have been living in them. As a matter of fact, the one in Porterville, I think we noticed in there that there were vagrants living in it at the time we demolished it. Nobody was actually in the building.
Well, let's hope right before, immediately before.
I think when they saw the equipment coming, they took off, but these are an attractive nuisance from that regard.
Well, that one especially, you were talking about, was right across the street from Granite Hills High School in Porterville, so it was very high visible, and it was a public safety issue.
I'm just wondering why it takes us 10 years to do this type of abatement.
I would like to see that we could speed these up in the next couple of years. We have quite a backlog to work through, and I think what we need to do is assign priorities with those of the worst, especially those near any schools or other facilities that...
You mean there's more?
Well, if I just might jump in, because I mean, part of this is the economics. I mean, we have to front the money for these things, and so we have a budget, we have budgetary constraints. So we do what we can, what we have budgeted for a given year, and then we have to wait till the next funding cycle before we can do another one. And that's been the major, one of the major constraints in moving forward with it more rapidly, is that you have more buildings that need to be demolished, and we have funding to do them.
Yes, we're cleaning up the county, not demolishing it, Supervisor.
And we're aggressively, once the lien is placed on the property, we're aggressively going into foreclosure proceedings and...
You have to wait five years?
You have to wait five years after you do this?
Yeah.
We have to wait till the tax sale.
Okay. But there's someone on top of that, we did some of these five years ago, that we're going through that process today, then I assume?
We haven't done these five years ago. We've done them the last couple of years, and yes, we're watching the clock very carefully.
I don't remember us doing this.
Oh, you weren't here five years ago.
I mean, the last few years, I don't remember this. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the recommendations.
It's a public hearing.
Oh.
It's all right. Okay, if we're through with questions for Mr. Hader, then this is a public hearing, which we will now open. Is there anyone that wishes to address the board about this?
I'm Bill Roberts, Roberts Engineering in Porterville. I'm a long-term time civil engineer here in Tulare County, and I am working with the owner of the building in Terabella, and I feel confident it can be restored. I think it's very much part of the history of Terabella, and I hope we can get the funds together to put senior housing there. I will be doing the engineering and making the case that it will be safe, will comply with codes and everything else, once we've done that. And I appreciate the six-month time extension. I think that's adequate to come forth with a plan. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for discussion and action, or maybe no discussion, just action Supervisor.
I'd like to restate my previous motion.
Second.
Cast your votes, please. With the exception of...
Of Terabella.
Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hader.
Bill?
Okay, we'll move to item number five. Public hearing. To waive the final reading and adapt an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance 352 pertaining to contractor's storage yards in the rural RA Zone. Morning. Good evening, Mr. Chuck P., as I always say.
Close enough.
Morning, Board. My name is George Finney with the Resource Management Agency. I'm here to, with Chuck Shabelski, to present this item to the board. It is a proposal to change the zoning ordinance to add contractor's storage yards as a special use in the RA Zone. Use permits for these contractors' yards on parcels less than five acres in size, when in conjunction with the residence in all the agricultural zones, but not the rural residential zone. And over the years, we've had a number of violations that have been processing for these types of facilities that have cropped up in those rural residential zones. This ordinance will help to resolve those particular issues, and provide a way for those contractors' yards to get into conformance with the zoning regulations. And at the same time, I think it also reflects a need to have space for these types of facilities, particularly in a growing economy in the county, where you need to have an opportunity for property owners to conduct home occupations within other same properties. The ordinance would also establish some standards for these types of activities, when in conjunction with an RA Zone. I think the most important one is that there has to be a regulation that limits the size to no less than one acre. So these are all for larger parcels in the areas that are not densely developed. The planning commission approved the ordinance change unanimously, and it is also supported by a number of the affected contractors that we've been working with, and also supported by the Code Enforcement Division. The only opposition was raised by the City of Tulare, who has, has a member of these types of activities in their periphery. The only other request, the other request that's on the agenda under this same item is that if the ordinance is approved, that you authorize the zoning administrator to hear and make decisions on these types of use permits. That's already the case with the contractor's yards and agricultural zones, so this will be compatible with that particular activity. Well, that would be not only the RA Zone, but also the F-Foot Hill Zone for the zoning administrator. That's my report, unless there's any questions.
Questions for Mr. Finney?
This is a public hearing.
All right. Yep. All right, then, it is a public hearing, so we will now open that, and anyone wishing to address the board on this item, please come forward now. Need your name and address for the record, please.
Hello.
Morning.
My name is Darlene Thompson. My address is 1202 Wescale Avenue, Tulare. And the company that I have is Creative Plastering Incorporated. I am very thrilled to see you. I started this process in 2002. I'm the first violator.
Thank you for identifying yourself.
No problem. No problem. First violator caught and did something for it, because I was told that this was a continual problem in Tulare County for years. The zoning would always go out and then try to enforce it. They would move, then they would come back when the guy left, and nobody wanted to come forth and ask for this change to happen. So, we had worked all of our lives, which, I'm not that old, but years, because we've been in business over 20, we've been in business since 1985. So when we got this piece of land, it was bare, and we were told that you could build according to the activity in the surrounding area, which we had a lot of contractor's storage yards. But that's not true, because it goes by your zoning, not by the activity. So we built a home, tri-level home, and we put our business in the back. We spent over $20,000 in landscaping on our left-hand side to make it look really nice before the fencing went up for the storage facility. So you pass off the road down a private drive to a fenced area for any guy who parks there who doesn't drive straight to the job site. And then behind that is another set of fences for our storage of scaffolding dry material. For us right now, this has been very beneficial. Construction is not well now, due to interest, foreclosures, you name it. So for us to have, a small company, I have seven employees, to have to live and then rent, you have to make adjustments, you close your business, you do whatever. With this, we live and operate, it helps cost. We are able then to, you know, our costs are just shorter, and for our seven employees, we still do a good gross sales benefit when we're busy, but we have to, you know, you only have so much money, especially in construction, there's a lot of people who compete, so, you know. So this has been good for us to have our site. It helps for theft. If any of you know who work in the building industry, any material left on a job site for any length of time disappears. So some of our stuff, we have delivered to my storage site, and then we take it out that day. we have delivered to my storage site, and then we take it out that day. Lathy material cannot ever be delivered, it will walk away, it's too light. Sand I've had even taken by pickup loads, other contractors on the job site wanting to use mine. We've also had cement delivered where if it was there more than a couple of days and we used it, disappeared. So, this helps us to maintain loss. And so, for us being a small business, it really helps being able to combine the two, live on the property, watch our stuff, you know, and do the best we can to make the property look as good as we can while we're storing stuff behind it. I have never had a complaint from any neighbors. I have a lot of people stop and look at my landscaping, because I have a fountain and stuff, so it's not nothing that is an eyesore to the community. One reason we started this too was so that we could continue for others, not just us, but in Tulare County, if we changed this ordinance. The zone enforcer was saying their hands are always tied, and it is very frustrating when they have to go kick someone out, and then they come back in, or they leave and somebody else comes in, and you've got the same problem, because they had really no authority to do stuff, because if you close me down, by gosh, you better close the other 100 people down in Tulare County that's doing this, or you're taking my livelihood away and letting them have theirs. So, that was the problem they were having. They said if someone stepped forward and changed this, it no longer binds our hands, we can say, hey, this is how it is. You pay your permit fees, you do it right, or we will close you down, because we will close the others down too, because we have now the authority to really get somewhere. Trying to squeeze your hand the other way for finances, average permit, they said is going to run between $3,000 to $6,000, depending on how much you have to get done that they have to come and check on. According to your statement that they send out, they got about 25 violators right now, I know six of them. Average of, you know, $4,000 a slot, there's 100 grand for Tulare County to work with now in their budget they didn't have before. But I know there's more than 25, because this is Tulare County. I know a lot of little pocket places that are in business, they just haven't been spotted yet. But if they are spotted, then now if something can be done, and they can get the permit fees, and they can continue Like I said, I would just, I think this is appropriate for this type of area. I have two and a half acres. My neighbors across the street are in the same boat as I am, and there's just happens to be a truck that hauls construction and storage, so they can't park their truck on there either. The gentleman down me has the same thing with his dump truck and backhoe, because he goes to job sites and does the sewers and stuff. Next to me is a company that just moved in who repairs pallets. They, right now, if I understand, I'm not completely sure, but I was told they have a permit that is regenerated every six months until this is resolved, that they pay like $2,500 for until this is resolved. The guy behind me has a fencing company, he stores all of his fencing materials there and his employees. So, I have them all in the area. And so, I would appreciate very hard thought on this, it would help a lot of us small businesses who need to keep functioning and be competitive, and take care of ourselves and our employees. I'll take any questions. And like I said, glad to see you, it's been a long road.
Thank you for your testimony. Maybe we should, in addition to noting that this will be ordinance number 352, we could also refer to it as the Darlene Thompson Ordinance.
Works, hey, it works, it works for me.
For the history of the county, and thank you for being here.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else wishing to address the board?
My name's Belina Fazio. I live at 1239 West Gale in Tulare, across from Darlene. I believe I'm violator number two. It's been a long road. I'm glad to see we're finally here. I just would like to say that the small business has been kicked upside the head. We don't seem to get anyone to listen to us. We live on two and a half acres also, as she said, and all of our neighbors in the area also have the small businesses as we do. I am the one who has one of the trucking companies in the area. By trucking company, it's an owner-operator. All we would like to do is store our equipment and park our loaded trailer on our two and a half acres. We have also landscaped our front yard. It was an orchard when we moved in. We have a block fence in the front, and we are willing to do whatever it takes to keep our truck and my husband working. We don't have trucks in and out, we don't have people coming in, it's just my husband and myself and our children. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here, thank you. Okay.
Please remain seated.
We just need your name and your address for the record.
I'm known as Robert Curtis, House of Youngs. And if you wish to post me, it would be at the First House of Delegates General Delivery, Goshen, California. I dwell on land held by a sign of a land patent, happens to be a railroad land patent at the moment, and it's been ruled for a long time that if there's any reservation on the land, it's found in the land patent. So, at this point, I am imposing Article I of the California Constitution, and I suppose the Bill of Reservations from the Federal Constitution, on Tulare County with regard to my goods and my being. The, come to my attention that the Judicial Council is not a constitutional entity, and apparently our so-called Superior Courts are operating under the, what do you call it, auspices of the Judicial Council. Listen, I'm going to go ahead and turn the floor back over, you have some other comments later, but in regard to your ordinance there, I'm grandfathered in, so please make note of that in the records. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Anybody else? All righty then. We will close the public hearing, bring it back to the board.
Madam Chair, I think this will expedite problems, issues that we've had in the county, and I would motion to approve.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Cast your votes, please. Okay, vote passes unanimously. Thank you to those that were here and for your weight. All right, we will move to untimed items. Item number 30, approve a resolution in support of proposed Tulare Basin Wildlife Management Area. Mr. Russo, are you doing this, or something?
Um...
Oh, there he is, right in front of me. Hi, Scott.
Why?
Come forward.
Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you today about the Tulare Basin Wildlife Management Area. This project is a wildlife habitat protection project focused on existing wetlands and the associated upland habitats. The project purpose is to protect in perpetuity 22,000 acres of migratory bird habitat within a larger project boundary. The reason for the larger project boundary is we have found that the location of some of the existing clubs and new and old clubs has been sort of dynamic in the seven years that I've been involved in the planning for this. Where there were clubs in the past, they've gone out of active management, and in the last few years, we've actually seen a couple of new clubs created, including some that you may be familiar with in the Alpa area that have been before you for some land use planning activities. The principal conservation protection measure and the tool envisioned to be used to protect these habitats is a conservation easement. This is something I'm sure most of you are aware of, and these conservation easements would be an overlay on private lands that would remain in private ownership, but it would be a land use restriction. So, by leaving these lands in private ownership, they stay on the tax rolls, and we're actually seeing a lot of stakeholders' support for this project, because we're able to put funding in the hands of the landowner, which they may find useful as they want to operate in the fashion they have historically. The planning also contains an option to buy not to exceed 2,000 acres in fee, and this comes from some public comments during, we had our public scoping sessions, that some individual landowners were expressing a desire to have the option to sell out in fee, and we felt that where those properties might be in critical locations and allow us to connect existing and adjacent lands, that this might be an option to pursue, although we quite honestly would prefer have the entire 22,000 acres protected in easement only. The majority of the Tulare Basin Wildlife Management Area project boundary is in northern Kern County, with approximately 3,300 acres in southern Tulare County. Kern County has recently responded to stakeholders expressing support with a resolution on their part supporting this project. So, I'm here today to answer any questions you have and seek your support for our conservation work.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions or comments from board members?
For the record, did he identify himself on the record?
Uh, did he?
Don't think so.
We can't remember.
Scott Fraser, I work at Kern National Wildlife Refuge, and I reside in Shaftor, California.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Has this ever come up before, Scott, where someone had a development easement that was placed on it as a development mitigation? Let's say if Kern County bought a piece of property in Tulare County, and they paid for a development easement, would this, how would this fit with your program? Could you do one, could you do both? A wetlands easement and a development easement?
If I understand the question as you've posed it, I believe theoretically it would be possible, but our agency would probably not be interested in lying those sort of easements over one another unless they were different things being protected. So, it's possible, for example, that these conservation easements have language in them that addresses the historic flooding of wetland habitats, for example, a duck pond on Organized Hunting Club. So, if the other organization's easement language did not address whether or not the landowner was going to flood a particular piece of habitat, and maybe they simply didn't want it to become a shopping center, for example, then at that point, we're trying to accomplish different things, and having the two easements overlay one another might be compatible.
Or farming. Some of this ground hasn't been farmed.
Historically, again, the individual properties that we've targeted, and I've provided in the past, the Board of Supervisors this document, and there's some language and some examples of locations of individual properties. We're looking for those lands that are actively managed currently, have wetland ponds on them, and they often have undeveloped adjacent uplands. But you're absolutely right, some of these areas have had dry land farming in the past, or some, again, have been created on sites that are no longer farmed. So, we can customize easements and have in other locations, in the Sacramento Valley and in the central San Joaquin and Merced County, to have what we term as wildlife-friendly farming, and grain crops are the primary example of that. So, a farming easement that is also overlined with a wetland conservation easement is theoretically possible, but we'd be more inclined to simply overlay the wetland portion of an ownership if it was already protected with a farmland easement. We would probably not want to expend our funds in a way we thought was duplicating protection that was already in place.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, you and I met with Scott, I think it was last week or so, or maybe a little before that, and I have been a skeptic, I suppose, on this board for the last nine-plus years about the fact that public ownership is a sort of an ongoing thing that happens in our county and throughout the state of California and across the country. We often focus on urban encroachment on farm property, we don't talk about public encroachment on farm property, which this may or may not constitute that. But one of the things that in my conversation with Scott that was impressive to me was, first off, this actually represents a reduction in the original plan area. The original plan area was to encompass a lot more acres, and because of some concerns raised by people such as myself, I suppose, it was more constrained, so it was reduced down to more of the critical type of habitat. And as you, as is pointed out, the vast majority of this is in Kern County. Kern County has, what, over 18, almost 19,000 acres of this 22,000 acres. They are supportive of it. I did, personally didn't want to see Tulare County come out and oppose something which was, we are, we're players, but we're minor players in comparison to the impacts it might have on Kern County. And we did talk about the subject that I think that Alan was raising, about, we've had some issues in the past where Kern County has come in, purchased some mitigation land in Tulare County, and they have just bought parcels, sort of Willie and, you know, everywhere. There's no, there's no real rhyme or reason to where they buy them. And the idea would be to try to perhaps work with the service of creating a mitigation bank in a concentrated area, so that if people were going to come into Tulare County and acquire property or mitigate for development projects in Tulare County, that we would at least have an identified area. And in our conversations with Scott, he was very interested in trying to work out, work with our county to provide, to work in that direction. It's a little premature to do that in this situation. This is already well-advanced, the EIR, EIS has already been completed, and this is towards the, sort of the final part of this project, and so it doesn't really work particularly well with this one. But I think the, looking to the future of additional adjacent properties, making sure that they're not scattered across the plain, but in fact are concentrated where it has a lesser impact on agricultural practices and future development is very critical for Tulare County. So, that's why I would support the resolution this morning to support the management area.
Yeah, and I do agree with you, and that's always my concern, and Scott knows this from the conversation that we had, is just how that impacts the land directly adjacent to it. You know, it's always my caution, I don't want to impact the neighbor's land adversely by creating these areas. And I understand the concept of willing seller, willing buyer, or willing buyer, willing seller, however you say that, that's still a concern of mine, so. But I do appreciate your comments, Supervisor.
Well, and our concerns are not ones that are dis speculative in nature, because we have just undergone this situation in Allensworth, where the park boundaries were not the constraining factor. The park felt it was incumbent on themselves to oppose development that was a mile and a half from the park boundaries. So, these are not just, we're not just dreaming up concerns.
Yes, we're not making this stuff up.
These really are happening, and so there is the concern that if the proposed area was going to be within a certain distance of this site, that we, you know, the Fish and Wildlife Service might be there threatening to sue us and the county and the applicant. So, those are legitimate concerns, and we, I continue to have these concerns about public ownership. And one of the questions I asked Scott was, you know, what's enough? When is enough enough? You know, over half Tulare County is owned by the government now, and that's true of all of California. And so, when do we decide that enough land is in public ownership? And there's no real answer to that, but today is not the day for us to, I think, to make that stand, so.
Okay, so was that a motion, sir?
I would move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Okay. In a second, cast your votes, please. Motion passes unanimously with caution.
Thank you so much. I'm always available to you as close to the phone. We're listed in the phone book as Kern Refuge, so if I can do anything else in regard to these discussions or other things, please feel free to contact us. I have initiated a contact with staff in Sacramento, and I know from your own experience, it probably won't surprise you, I haven't gotten a call back yet, so I will follow up on that. And I think that there may be some opportunities, but as I mentioned to you, Supervisor, briefly, you know, I don't even have the authority to speak for my own organization, never mind for some other state agencies that you've dealt with in the recent past. But we would certainly be interested in, you know, sitting down with you and them if there was an opportunity to create an overlay, which I think would be very beneficial, both for the wildlife resources and for the organizations like ourselves that would then be potentially involved in that.
We appreciate that, and all the time and effort you put, and thank you for being here, Scott.
Thank you so much.
And we need more blinds.
No doubt, and more ducks. And again, as Supervisor Ashida has given me a brief opening here, you know, that's the whole purpose here, is we want to preserve the migratory bird resource, and this is a good step in doing this, so thanks for your support.
Supervisor Ashida always wants to have that conversation.
He loves ducks, especially in his freezer.
Don't mind those conversations, Supervisor, as long as they're held off of board time. Thank you, Scott. All right. Item 31, request from Eugene Russo.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 31 is from the County Administrative Office. It reflects a request to this board to adopt an urgency ordinance. We, the CO's office, has been negotiating with the Southern California Gas Company for well over a year to extend their agreement with the county. In 1958, the Tulare County Board of Supervisors adopted ordinance number 652, which granted a franchise to the gas company to construct, operate, and use a system of pipelines in the streets and highways of unincorporated territory. The franchise was granted for 50 years and is soon coming up to expire. Our office has been working with a number of other counties and trying to push this agreement forward. Specifically, we've worked with San Luis Obispo, Kings County, and Fresno County to try to garner our resources and adopt a similar strategy to negotiate with the gas company. Our office specifically has been negotiating with Colby Wells, who was in the back of the, of our boardroom today. And we quickly realized that due to the timing and the expiration date of this 50-year ordinance, that an emergency ordinance would be needed to provide more time to my office to negotiate some of the deals that we're trying to get in place with the gas company. We, you know, we have a good working relationship with the gas company to date, and we want to make sure that we continue that relationship. There are some things that we feel we can ask the gas company to provide, such as information about pipelines and continue to work well with our Resource Management Agency. And in fact, we've worked with our Resource Management Agency to include some of their requests in this agreement. So it's just going to take some time to get this in place. We feel the one-year extension will provide that time to us. So procedurally, the board must, we're asking the board to introduce and waive by majority vote the reading of the urgency ordinance. Number two, find that based on the evidence before the board, disruption of the orderly operation of the franchise will adversely affect the public peace, health, and safety within Tulare County. And three, and finally, adopt by four-fifths vote an uncodified urgency ordinance extending the expiration date of the existing gas franchise of the company to midnight on February 28, 2009. So Madam Chair, with that, I'll take any questions and...
Questions from board members? You're smiling, Supervisor Cox.
I was just, I was concerned about 15 minutes ago that it took us 10 years to get something done, and now we're going on 51.
My, how time flies.
I definitely wasn't around for that one.
You were born, but you weren't here on the board. Okay, well, there's any, no other questions or comments?
I would motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Have a motion, a second. Cast your votes, please. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Colby.
Madam Chair.
Okay, we'll move to item 32, requests from Capital Projects.
Good morning.
The first of other requests, but...
Brian Summers, Senior Capital Projects Coordinator. For your board this morning is approval of the purchase of a modular building located on county-owned land at 41414, Road 128 in Rosy. This facility has been used as a temporary home of the Cutler-Rosy Sheriff's Substation while design and construction of a new substation were completed. Construction of the new station is now complete, and the modular building is vacant. Several community groups have approached the county regarding future uses of the facility. At the request of the CAO, a purchase price was requested from the vendor, William Scotsman of Fresno, in the amount of $14,657, as stated on the agenda. In reviewing the sales documents, the purchasing agent discovered that the tax rate used was not up-to-date, and the corrected purchase price is $14,649.12, an increase of $49.45. As a result, the resolution and the attached OD308 form will need to be amended to reflect the correct purchase price. The funding source for the purchase was inadvertently stated in the agenda item as proceeds, and should have been stated that it is a separate gang activity fund. It is requested that your board authorize the purchase of the building and approve the necessary budget adjustments. And this concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to respond to any questions.
Questions? Nope, all right. Board will entertain a motion now.
Chairman, I just quickly want to thank, again, Phil Cox and our Capital Projects folks for working on this. I've had many different organizations contacting me about our intended use of the facility and the property, and it's a great location for community involvement and uses, and so I look forward to making good use of this. And it fits in very well with our anti-gang theme of the current year, so I would at this time move for approval.
Second.
Motion, a second. Cast your votes, please. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Mr. Summers. And would you like to just stay there?
I will, if it's all right with you, Madam Chair.
Or item 33?
Good morning, Brian Summers, still the Senior Capital Projects Coordinator. On January 15, your board heard proposals from two qualified firms for the completion of a master plan for Moonee Grove Park, including design services for the new History of Farm Labor and Agriculture Museum facility. At the conclusion of the presentations, staff was directed to receive feedback from parties interested in participating in the master plan development and return to your board the recommendation. The first presenter was the Cooper Carey team, led by Project Director Jeff Cozy. The Cooper Carey presentation offered a creative vision for the park, including the addition of an outdoor art walk, and highlighted a unique approach to long-term funding for park improvements and operations by creating commercial zones in the park for development. Revenue from leases of the developed spaces would provide funding for both improvements and operations and serve as gateways into the park. The second presenter was the Kleinfelder team, led by Project Director Andrea Urbis. The Kleinfelder approach was centered around protecting and enhancing existing park amenities that would lead to increased community involvement. Additional picnic arbors, entertainment, and recreational venues were among the improvements that were recommended. Also offered were enhancements to the existing museum area to create a village complex utilizing existing structures and exhibits with a phased approach to new features and structures. After receiving input from several entities and individuals, including the City of Isilia, Tulare County Historical Society, Tulare County Office of Education, community members and county staff, the majority favored the Kleinfelder vision for the park. The common thread of those recommending Kleinfelder was the belief that theirs was an achievable vision and was consistent with local concerns for the park's future, while recognizing its past and the impact the park has had on the community over the years. After careful review of both presentations and input received, staff is recommending your board select the Kleinfelder team to provide the requested services, and direct staff to complete an agreement with Kleinfelder for the completion of a 20-year master plan for Moonee Grove Park and design services for the new History of Farm Labor and Agriculture Museum. In conclusion, I would like to thank both firms for the quality and depth of the visions developed for Moonee Grove Park. Each firm presented unique ideas that could be incorporated into the long-range master plan, and as such, they should be proud of the effort they expended. And this completes my presentation, and I will be happy to respond to any questions.
Okay, questions from board members?
Comments? I don't have any questions.
Okay, well, if there's no questions, then I suppose we'll just move right to comments. And I'll start with you, Supervisor. District One.
District One. As one, I, as one board member, do not agree with the recommendation. And the reason I do not agree with the recommendation is the fact that I think there's a perception that we have decided that we're going to go with a village theory of museum. And to me, that may not be the best alternative, just because of the upkeep and the maintenance cost of separate buildings. So what I liked about group number one is the fact that they would reach out to the community and let the community decide what kind of museum or development that we would have in Moonee's Grove. So I do not have a preconceived idea or notion of what the museum would look like. The other part I liked about the first group was the fact that they have experience in The county of Tulare will not be able to build this museum complex beyond the farmworker museum without private help, and also help from other public agencies. So I think the funding vision is extremely important as a business plan to get this thing built. I think the one thing that we really need to look at, no matter who is awarded the contract to look for, to go forward with this, is it's easy to build a building. It's very difficult to maintain the building and the operating cost. And we really need to look at the latest technology, and as a very conservative person, think green, to reduce our ongoing utility costs. So there's a lot of different aspects that we need to look at, and I'm sure both groups will look at this. My concern also is the fact that Tulare County is changing. Tulare County is no longer the pioneer village that we see in Kingsburg. Tulare County is becoming, is an urban county. The people we're attracting may have a little different idea as to what type of museum that we should build. I know we've been an agricultural county, we'll always be primarily an agricultural county, but I'm not sure if a set of barns is going to be the right way to design our future museum. So I just like the broader vision of group one versus the second presentation.
Any comments?
I also agree with Supervisor Ashida when I listened to two different presentations, because I liked the first presentation better, because I thought they were taking a building, looking at it 10, 15, 20 years down the road, what's that building going to cost us to keep operating it? And those were some of the things, being as tight as I am, I'm always looking at ways to cut corners on, especially on maintenance and stuff like that. So that was what impressed me with them, and also the fact that they could garner money from the community to maybe help with the project.
Had to look up for a minute, make sure it wasn't Jim Mickelson there. Okay, Supervisor Cox.
I want one quick question before I make my comments. Right, it's my understanding that we, did we actually pay these folks to come in with these ideas? Are these ideas ours?
That is correct.
Okay, so the ideas from both groups, we actually purchased, so we're not limited to just A or B. And I personally will agree with staff's recommendation, that was my feeling, the very first day, my first comment, this is just, we're just not looking at the museum here. We're just not looking at that piece, we're looking at the whole project as a whole. And I think this community looks at that park as something that needs to be, for the most part, preserved. We do need to enhance our museum facilities and some of the facilities, but in whole, I think the community wants us preserved. I don't think we'll ever see the bear or the, you know, the ostrich, or whatever, or the animals that were there when I was a kid. I don't think we'll ever see those there again. But I think the community wants to see this park preserved as a park and not built into an amusement park or a commercial facility, so I didn't really, you know, I thought the village concept was intriguing. I don't know that I liked that, but I think both groups said they're going to go through a public process and see, you know, what the public's input is. And when the public gives their input, at that time, if, when they give their input, they have to put their money where their mouth is as well. So we purchased these ideas, they're ours, and I think we can, you know, be a driving force into the future construction of a museum or building, if it needs to be green or high efficient, whatever it needs to be. We bought those ideas, those are things that we can use in our vision. I agree with staff's recommendation, I liked the second presentation, because I like the idea of preserving what we have there more than almost building like an amusement park setting, which is what I saw. If you build out those front pieces of property, where I know we just planted over 100 brand-new oak trees over the last few years, you're not going to be able to see the park. When you drive by, you're going to see like an amusement park setting. And I think when you drive by that park, you want to see a park, you want to see the oak trees, you want to see this open space. So that's kind of why, that's why I'll support the staff recommendation and vote for Kleinfelder.
Or you have any comments this morning?
Well, I had asked this matter to be continued, because I felt both presentations were very good, and I, and not one really stepped up above the other, they were both high-quality. And so I'm really happy to go with our staff's recommendation. One thing I do want to point out, though, in a chance meeting I had with our RMA director, is that we do have a ticking clock here relative to the grant that we received on this museum, and we need to be moving rather quickly, at least on that part of this, because we certainly don't want to lose the funding that really has sort of driven this whole process. So just to bring that to the board's attention, that if there was some thought about delaying it further, I don't think that's in our best interest, I think we need to move forward today.
Okay. I think I heard what I thought I heard. Supervisor Ashida, you want to speak again?
Well, I agree with my colleagues that no matter what direction we go with, what firm we pick, I believe we're going to get a quality job. So, you know, I may not agree with the staff recommendation, but I also know that the other group, or the staff recommendation of the group, they're more than capable of doing a fine job, and that we need to move forward.
Madam Chair, if it would be of assistance, I've got a summary of the responses back from the parties that responded, if you'd be interested in reviewing those, I can walk you through those.
Nope, I don't need them.
Okay. Well, I can count, and I am hearing. These decisions are never easy, and I really appreciate the quality of work from both presentations, and I have given it a lot of thought. But I also heard from community members and partners that were in the audience that have contacted me since the presentation. And not having seen your numbers, Mr. Summers, but certainly the majority that contacted me felt that they were interested in the second presentation. And although both were excellent and both were great, and it is comforting to know that we can blend ideas as we move forward, so that we meet the needs of all those that have an opinion on this. I am leaning probably towards presentation number two, simply because that was the feedback I received from the community. It's a very difficult choice to make, but that's kind of where my thoughts are. I mean, I don't know, if you, members of the board, heard from our community partners about this item or not, that's really basic what I'm, either one is great, I'd be happy with either one. I'm simply basing my opinion on feedback from the community.
As was I, Madam Chair, as well. That was one of the factors I used to make my decision.
Okay. Well, there is time, we do need to do something.
I would make the motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, have a motion, a second. Cast your votes, please.
Waiting for a vote from District Five.
What is it?
Okay.
I was trying to go both directions.
Thus we see, the vote, the motion passes on a three to two vote, and I think you can see how torn we are, and how much we appreciate the presentations from both companies.
Very good, thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Okay, next time on our agenda is public comment. If there's anyone here wishing to comment on items under this board's purview, but not on the agenda, now would be the time.
My name is Isaac Acevis, I live in Rosy, and I'm very concerned about the gang problems in Cutler and Rosy. So I just came to ask the board to please help us out in that community. That's what I can, what I can ask of the board, and that's why I'm here, so. My neighbors have had three drive-by shootings, three of them, mind you. So I go to bed at night, kind of scared every time I go to bed, so please do whatever you can to help us out in Cutler and Rosy. I thank all of you and have a good day.
Thank you. Thank you.
And for the record, Isaac was here when we talked about our gang step-up summit, so...
Good, and I hope we're engaging Isaac in that effort.
He just, he just joined the committee.
Yeah, we're putting you on a committee now.
Blow me again. I'm before you to make a claim.
Excuse me, we do need your name and address for the record.
I am Robert Curtis, House of Youngs, First House of Delegates, General Delivery, Goshen, California. One of the people of California.
Get that show.
An heir, is she taking the record?
Yes, we have to, and I wanted to make sure that...
I assume that you did, I probably shouldn't make assumptions. Anyway, I'm an heir to the people that are mentioned in the admission to the union. I'd like to correct an assumption that one of you gentlemen made earlier, is that the state owns land. The correction is that the people own the land. The people are not the government. The truth is that Tulare County and the state of California own nothing, they hold a trust for the people in that. Another point of order is you shouldn't make a motion, you should just merely move, but that's beside the point. Anyway, the reason I'm down here is I want my grundle back.
Excuse me, the what?
My grundle. You people have been gradually stealing my grundle, and I want it back.
Okay.
I'm disgruntled. And I'm entitled to my grundle. We have a constitution for California. You might say we have two, because in the wisdom of our so-called legislatures in Sacramento, they've removed the boundaries and the schedule from the so-called constitution that we have. I can live with that, hey. Although Article One of that constitution is a reservation on you people, the whoever, anybody that has an oath of office, that Article One is a reservation of the rights to the people. It provides for due process, and due process cannot be infringed upon by, for instance, a group of people calling themselves the Judicial Council. I've done some research on this, the Judicial Council, I declare under penalty of perjury, as I have found, if you wish to prove that I'm mistaken, that's fine, I'd appreciate it, but the Judicial Council is not a constitutional office, just a more or less ad hoc or at the very most an administrative office. They have no legislative authority to change my due process or anybody else's, stated in English. Oh, I forgot to mention, the language of California, as it was established in eighteen forty-nine, is a bilingual state, bilingual nation. Spanish and English are provided for in that original constitution, and all the acts that are done are supposed to be done in both languages. So the big question about bilingual, this and that, has been established since we became one of the several states of the Union. Now, the supervisors, I want to make this point, you folks are involved in supervising the employees of the government, the common highways and other common property, but you're not in charge of supervising me. I'm not opposed to government, I'm not anti-government, don't throw me into some group of government haters. I love government and I love the rule of law. Now, the point is about the rule of law, you have an attorney or somebody up here, don't you? One of you fellows is. The law itself does not compel performance. I have rights, okay? I have the quiet enjoyment of my rights. Technically, that's all I have, two rights, the right to defend my rights and the quiet enjoyment of them. That means my rights do not interfere with anybody else. I have two obligations. Lost my place, my mind went blank, but anyway, the obligations of law are keep my promise and leave everybody else alone. As long as I'm within the quiet enjoyment of my rights... Are you following this, sir? I'm talking to Mr. Worley, he's there.
I'm listening.
He's, I'm just curious, I want you to jump up and say, that guy's a wingman or whatever, if I'm wrong. But as far as your administrative officers and everything come around, like your zone commission or whatever, unless they have someone else who is equal to my status complain to them whom I can face to face, and they can state the damage or the problem that they have with me, there's no, there's nothing going on. Your employees, they can, you know, whatever they have with their employees, but as far as the people, go ahead.
I was just going to ask you, are you addressing a specific issue, sir, or are you just expressing your position to us?
I'm addressing my, my status with you people. Because I have a problem, for instance, across the way there, for one thing. I don't want to take a bunch of your time, but I'm entitled to. I don't know if all of you understand the difference between a democracy and a republic. You know, we're way into that. But every one of you, when you took that oath, you applied a constitutional disability to your position in government. I have no disabilities as far as the Constitution. See, Constitution is our authority over you people. And I know you think you're doing right, but we're a little mistaken, we've gone from a top-down organization to a bottom-up. Our legislatures meet, they invoke the constitutional resolution. Anybody familiar with the constitutional resolution that the representatives and senators invoke in Sacramento? Nobody is. The resolution, the way I understand it, repeals the Constitution during the time they meet so that they won't be breaking their disabilities while they discuss it. That's a treason. They cannot, I'm sorry, I'm putting you to... The main thing that's on my mind, I've been investigating the status of, and I'm not trying to overthrow the government, I'm not trying to, I just feel that if my servants want me to obey every jot and tittle of the law, they have to also. Here's my, one of my main concerns. And it's a, it's a big one, and you'll probably be upset with me for even bringing it up. There's three things that you have to take if you're an elected officer, you have to be elected to office, big problem with that, because the voters have no accounting of the way they voted. And until you guys can show each voter how he voted, it can stay secret or whatever, there's ways to do that with random numbers or whatnot, electronically, whatever. But until each voter has a record of the way he voted, and I realize you can't go back after you vote and change your vote, right? But everyone who votes has to have an accounting of the way he voted. Okay? Now, when that vote is counted, the only guy that really votes is the guy that runs the computer, programs it. That's the way it is, and I ain't standing for it. If you can't run that thing and get the exact same number of votes every time, I don't care if it's insignificant if the difference you count every time doesn't quite make a difference in the outcome of the election, I don't care. The banks have been doing accounting for ages and ages, and they always manage to come out right. Well, you know, with, I represent a, what do you call it, heir, way below what I see going on with the vote, it's ridiculous. So you get that straightened out, that would accomplish number one. Then you can legitimately say you hold office, except for the fact that each one of you and anybody in here that's working for the government that has a position of authority emolument, has to have a oath and a bond of, bond, a bond guaranteeing the oath of office.
Sir, sir, I do want to give you your due process, and I appreciate you being in your comments. We have, I just have an eleven o'clock...
Is anybody in back there with only fifteen minutes of their time?
Well...
I mean, I need to finish this.
We, we have an eleven o'clock timed item that I, that I need to get to, sir. Okay.
Point about the bond goes back to the same point about who owns the land. The government doesn't have any assets, the people do. And the very purpose of this bond is to protect the people. Now, the county cannot be self-bonding, there's no way. It's only logical. It defeats the whole purpose of the bond. So I'd like to have you comment back on this, without the bond, you people don't even hold the office. It's a charade.
What's number three? You're going to get to number three, tell us what number three is first.
We have an eleven o'clock timed item that we're going to get to.
Yeah, let's...
Hey, you know, you guys have got me a little flustered now, and it's my fault, but my point is that as far as my relationship with you guys, you need to get these things straightened out before any of your stuff impinges upon me. I'm a law-abiding man, and I appreciate lawful government and peace and order and all that. But I see, I see governments coming around and making claims upon me that are unfounded and unpursuable. Okay, the third one, you asked that, since you asked it. I have no constitutional clerk. The county clerk is my access to the government. Moment, there's no county clerk. The county clerk was in charge of the elections, the records, the court, those were three of them, I can't remember all, I think that, those were the main three, the elections, the court, and the records. And it was elected. At the moment, you've combined all the offices, jumbled it all up, I have no access to any of my government through my own elected clerk. Actually, the way the government's supposed to work, that clerk is the only access I have to government. The court clerk is appointed by the Judicial Council over here. Wrong. Anyway, if I don't hear from you, I'll assume that I'm right.
Madam Chairman, public comment period is not for discourse, it's for you to address us, and it's not, it's not on today's agenda.
I'm only making a claim, and with that, I'll leave you to your weight.
Thank you.
I would make a suggestion that you contact Bill Mazer Assemblyman, because...
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea, and I've made an attempt at...
Okay, thank you.
It's well laid.
Okay. Does anybody have any pressing Board of Supervisors matters comment they'd like, because we do have an eleven o'clock?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Council, we have needed a closed session.
We do have a need for two closed sessions, that would be items C and E, the rest of the closed sessions are off the calendar, we don't need those today.
Okay, paid any...
We do not anticipate any announcements out.
All right, with that, then we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you all for your patience, I hope the morning was as educational for you as it was for me. Meeting will be adjourned at closed session.